We're gonna, why don't we start with the two folks who are here? See if those other folks show up. Otherwise, we'll go to our bullpen waiting list. We got Brian Wolf, Gary Turnus. Is Gary here?
Nope.
There's Gary, okay. And Jerry Hillary, is Jerry around? Don't see Jerry yet. And then Alan Redding. And there's Alan. Okay, so I don't know if we're gonna get all the way down the list, but why don't we get started? And why don't we give everybody, why don't we limit it to like five or six minutes? And try and get as many folks done as possible this evening? If we could do that, if that's okay. Mark?
Hi.
Hello.
Thanks, everyone, for allowing me this opportunity. I will say, before I get into my remarks, that being involved in this thing I've been involved in all summer has shown me some very crazy stuff that goes on out in the community that you people probably deal with every day, and I had no idea happened. So my hat is off to you for what you have to go through for this giant $3,000 a day salary that you make. So thank you for all you do. I really appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. On a good year, right? Yeah, so anyway, I'm here. I moved to Bloomington in 1990, grew up in Richfield. I'm a retired union electrician, and I lived real close to here up until this year. And then I moved to a senior cooperative on Lindell Avenue South, and that's where I currently reside. I'm here to just talk about bike safety, or about things I've noticed. This is just observations from an old guy that gets to ride his bike every day if he wants, and things I've seen, and just things I'll pass along. Not necessarily advocating for things right now. I may do that in the future, but just things, and maybe you can enlighten me on some things I miss. But the first thing I want to talk about is just trying to be safe. Now, we're talking now about riding a bicycle in on the streets of the city of Bloomington. So this isn't a recreational thing, although it is for me, because again, I'm retired, but more of a, this would be an actual activity that people would use to like replace of starting up a car for a day, or a week, or you know, if they're lucky, their whole career. So I think it's important, and I see the city doing it. So again, there's nothing negative, I don't think, other than the times I was scared. So I'll, and I'll share those with you. But first thing is about bike lanes. And you guys are doing an amazing job so far with bike lanes, to be a city that really grew up in love with and embracing the automobile, to have to change that direction and make that fit, what we're all trying to do now, I think is wonderful. I would say this, the problems I've had in bike lanes, I ride a lot on 86th Street, which is a nice one. I mean, for bike lanes, it's nice. But there's a couple of things that I notice. First of all, it would be helpful, I think, if that little emblem of a person on a bicycle that gets stenciled on, if you put those in more places, because, and I'll get into it, but I think a lot of car drivers, it still seems like a lot of people don't know what that little lane is for. I don't know if any of you ride, and if you notice that. I always have a little, I have lights on the front and back of my bike, and I have a little rearview mirror that sits off my helmet. And so I can watch what, you know, I always say I do it so I can see my impending death coming. But mainly, I can see what people are up to behind me. And you know, if you're on a small trail and somebody's faster than you, which is pretty much everyone for me, I can let them ride by me, that kind of thing. So, and I'm just gonna say, make the bike lanes as wide as possible, but I know there are limits to that. I think also, it seems to sometimes be helpful to have signs, actual signs, although I see those a lot, so I'm not saying you don't have them. But it's nice sometimes on that lane. I've noticed if there's two lines, that seems to help people. And one of the things that I mentioned to, actually at the the public engagement events for the creek last week, I was talking to a couple engineers, and I was mentioning that where you've gone to three lanes from four, which is a really nice thing, and thank you for doing that wherever you've done it. One of the things that I notice is that people, I can see it in my mirror, people are reluctant to get into that center lane because there's yellow lanes there, yellow lines there. Excuse me, I gotta relax. And I think that scares some people, especially people who were taught how to drive back in the 50s. You know, just like, no, you can't cross that. You're not passing anyone. And so I don't know, permission needs to be given, but I see that. And so people go right next to me, and of course, my thing is like, dude, you have that whole other thing. So I don't know what can be done about that, but that's one of the things that I, that I notice with that. The other issue, and it's kind of interesting, is even where there are bike, sort of like bike and walking pathways, I'm thinking now like on Cedar, going north from Old Chocopee towards, you know, Richfield. It's on the sidewalk. But the weird thing is, people in their cars coming out of apartment buildings, businesses, whatever, they sort of go right through that lane. You know, they're stopping to see if there's cars on Cedar, but they kind of ignore that, and that can get a little dangerous at times. I mean, me, I don't care what your car is doing. I'm looking at your eyes. If I don't see your eyes, I'm nervous about what you're gonna do. You know, and that's, you have to do that as a biker. And the other thing, I'm gonna, I brought a prop. I'm gonna demonstrate, and this should be off anyway, so it's a good thing. We passed a law where you can't drive like this anymore, right? So what people do now is you see them doing this, like, and that's actually harder for a biker, because where before, I mean, I'm not advocating we repeal that law by any means. I don't want to repeal anything, by the way, just so we're all clear on that. But anyway, it's fascinating to me. Like, it's gone from a peripheral vision thing to now like you gotta physically put your head. So it looks like I'm running out of time, Mayor?
Indeed, Mark, I'm apologizing for that, but we want to make sure that we talk to all.
One last thing, it came up a couple times at the engagement events that people were complaining to me, I guess because they know I ride bikes, that there's no way to get, and this is not safety related, but there's no way to get to the river if you're on a bicycle hardly. And I just want you to know, there are 12 ways, and I've documented all these, I've got them right here. I'll leave this here. And so if you know anyone who thinks we don't have enough ways to get to the Minnesota River, feel free to share that. And you have my name, a bunch of you do, and my email address. I can get you a copy, so no problem. I would even give you the electronic version, all right? Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Well done.
Andrew, was it, is that, Andrew, did you just walk in? I'm sorry, are you Andrew?
No, I'm not.
Are you on our list? Are you Tom?
Not.
Oh, good enough then, okay. Andrew, is Andrew here? All right, we'll move it on to Sally. Sally Ness.
Hello. So I remember there was a speaker at one time that was commenting about a neighbor having a camera directed at the house. And if I recall correctly, the response was, there wasn't anything the city could do because it's not against the law. And so there wasn't anything the city was offering to help.
I don't recall that. Was that here at a listening session?
Yeah, at a listening session. Okay, so another example, if it's 7:05 and you're mowing your lawn, and you call the city and say, this is not neighborly, does the police come out? Seven, our noise ordinances.
Yeah, they call the police and say.
At 7:05.
I think the response you would get from the dispatch is that the noise ordinance is ineffective until 7:00 AM. And if somebody's cutting the grass, no, it is not neighborly, but it is not against the law.
And same thing, like if they're doing their leaf blower on the next.
Those are the bane of my existence, Sally.
Never met a rake.
The police wouldn't do anything. I mean, basically, the police don't do anything unless there's been a crime, unless there's something against a city code.
Not necessarily. That's not, they respond to, for example, lurking calls or suspicious activity.
That would be crime, lurking calls.
Suspicious activity is not a crime.
You have to say suspicion of a crime. You can't just say, oh, the person's suspicious. You would have to say.
Not necessarily.
Also reply to injuries.
Yeah.
Right.
A crime.
Right, an injury, something, something.
Or if a child is lost, that's not a crime. They'll respond to that. So no, they respond to a number of different things that are not necessarily crimes.
Okay, so my point being that for my name to be in a report, they had a concern. The concern is, you're saying they were concerned I was hurt? No, obviously, that's not the case. They were concerned, you know, I mean, that I'm not getting any council member. Instead, you're justifying my name in seven reports. I'm hearing people commenting and justifying that my name is in seven reports. My understanding, like again, I recall the person commenting that there is a camera pointed at my house. It's like, we don't have a law against that. There's nothing we can do about that. So for my name to be in a report, so lurking, seven times lurking, that's okay? When you put someone's name, you know, I mean, lurking, like, really? Oh, she's lurking, and then the police are gonna come out because I'm lurking, but I wasn't there. And that's the other kicker again. I filed against the city on December 2nd. I wasn't in the area because I thought, if you guys charged me with something, which I was afraid you were going to, even though I wasn't committing any crime, then my case would have to hold until the criminal proceeding went through. So I know I wasn't anywhere that someone could say, I have a concern about her, because I had to remove myself from the whole situation so that I wouldn't be falsely charged with something. And so again, no, there's no reason my name to be in there, and it should be a concern to council members that my name would end up in a report when I'm not in the area at all. There's no crime that I'm accused of committing. So yes, there should be an investigation. Yes, you don't want to, but I want you guys to hear, this is wrong. It's wrong.
We've heard that, now you've, it's a number of times. And you've heard us say that, I mean, the police chief asked the department, and nobody could recall, and he considers it a closed case within the city.
Right.
Bloomington Police Department.
Right, and I'm saying, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make.
You don't agree with, and that's.
And that's.
We stand.
And I'm here commenting again.
That's where we stand.
Trying to make it, it doesn't make sense.
Robert Carter, a question, a very quick one here?
I thought you were gonna do a data request on this.
I am, I'm waiting for the.
So why don't you just get the data and file, do whatever you're gonna do? I mean, none of us have, we don't have the data. Most of us weren't on council. We have no idea what was happening then. So why don't you just do your thing? And come back to us when you have the information, and tell us exactly what you want.
And as a council member who represents somebody, why aren't you calling up and saying, I want to know.
You know what?
She's doing a data request, but I really want to know. Why is her name in seven reports? What was she doing? From our understanding, she's telling us she filed against the city on December 2nd, and then you guys.
Sally, because you're gonna do what you want to do anyway. So just do it. So, I mean, if you come here every single meeting on a different issue, once this issue's done, you'll have another one.
Right.
So just do your thing.
And the previous, and the previous issue about the handicap parking, you still had it, you misunderstood it, you incorrectly commented. The city gave an inaccurate information to the council, and you are accepting the inaccurate.
Hey Sally, you know that's not the case.
Yes.
Five minutes now, we're at five minutes now. Thank you. So Tom, has Tom made it yet? Tom Anderson? All right, we're gonna go head to the bullpen quickly here. Brian Wolf.
Sorry, so we did get an email from Renee relatively recently with an update from the engineers who were assessing Nine Mile. And I don't think that's public yet. Well, I think we can say something preliminary. So many of you are here, I just think it might be, it might influence some comments.
It might be worth letting me speak. And then if you have questions or want to add something, because I'm thinking we all know the same thing.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
First of all, if, okay, I'm gonna stand just because my back gives me some trouble, and it's actually easier to stand, so I'm gonna stand if that's all right. And I'll, what's that? I was on a bike today. I didn't want to do it, it's lifting it, but I've only got five minutes, so none of that.
Back is minutes.
So I'll introduce myself for the record. Brian Wolf, 3321 Overlook Drive. And I'm gonna start by expressing appreciation for the REVEAL event that was held on Monday and Tuesday. It was well done. Appreciated the boards. They were clear and well done, and I really appreciated. And when I say I, I should really be saying we. I think in all cases, we would all agree that that was really well done, and we really appreciated the staff that was there, their willingness to answer questions. It was a good event, and I'm not saying that just because of the results. But obviously, that's the next thing I'll mention here is, obviously, we're very happy to have seen what we saw. It's clear that there will not be dual-use trail. The boards did not make it clear that there would not be natural surface trails, but staff did assure us that there wasn't room for natural surface trails. And so from Moir Park to the river bottoms, there will be no bike trails, as I understand it, and we're obviously pleased about that. There are a couple of items. We would like to talk at some point about the surfacing of the trail south of 106th Street. And we have some concerns about a possible bike access off of Queen. And I think we may also want to have something to say about the educational component and the restoration, but that's not why I'm here either. We'll come back to do that. I am here because I want to thank the city council staff for the way that we've been treated with respect, the opportunity we've had to address you. That's been greatly appreciated by all of us. We also very much enjoyed and have a great deal of thanks for the walks that we took. Many of you went walking with me personally. I was involved in a lot of those. Others here were involved as well. And universally, after every one of those walks, we had the same things to say. You were great. You listened. We could tell by your questions that you listened. You were responsive, didn't always give us everything we wanted. I heard sometimes I may have to be compromised. I didn't want to hear that. But you know, you paid attention, you listened, and we respect that greatly. I have to say that you didn't go for a walk with me, Elton Menloman, but you did have me over to your house, and I think our conversation went on about two and a half, three hours. My wife was wondering why I got home so late. Maybe you can just confirm that at this point. That would help me out just a little bit. When I come home with beer on my breath, at that time.
Walking very straight when he got.
It's important that I have a councilman in my pocket when that happens. The coram here is one person speaks at a time. I'm gonna ask you to make one exception for just a moment. I think everybody in unison would like to say thank you from the score of nine. We appreciate it. That's all I've got.
Very good.
At least for now.
Thank you. Question?
Quickly, just a comment. So thank, I don't want to speak for anybody else, just me, but I enjoyed my interactions with all of you as well. I do want to be sure that you all, one of the things I hope you take away from this is that faith in local government is not dead. The feasibility studies that they did were gonna always happen. They were always gonna happen, and they were done in a way that was objective and intentionally meant to give us information as a council to make decisions on without bias, without leaning one direction or the other, or anything like that. That's true of all of the staff here in all of the departments. We are very lucky to be supported by some of the best staff members in the city government. And I just, I want you all to know that every single time we do work within the city, we're using the same processes that you got to witness. So I hope that it does restore a little faith in our government to you as well. And the next time we have an issue, we can start with asking questions and reaching consensus as opposed to potentially starting off the way that we did with, which was, you know, hell no, as our first idea. So, but I love the interaction, and I appreciate you all so very much for sticking with it.
The narrative that we are selling is that we brought you to this. The reason that has to be the narrative is you can't imagine the number of hours we put in. And if this was going to be the result anyway.
No, I don't mean to. Clarify, I don't mean that your input wasn't important. I just meant that the feasibility study is part of that and is neutral.
I'm gonna cut you, I'm gonna.
Long time to get there, I think.
I'm gonna interrupt you both. Mr. Brugge in quick here?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Mayor and council members, just in case folks in the room aren't familiar with what Mr. Wolf was talking about is, and just to share, the boards from the REVEAL last week have been posted to the Let's Talk Bloomington site with project updates related to the Nine Mile Creek Corridor project, and the discussion around shared used trail for pets and bikes, or separated trails for pets and bikes. Both said not feasible due to cost and environmental impacts. The one comment that I would like to make on behalf of staff is the feedback that I received from staff was their appreciation that you told them how much you appreciated the integrity and the honesty that they demonstrated throughout the process, and that meant a lot to them.
I'm glad that was communicated.
Good.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, we are.
Gary? Please, come on up.
Other guy.
Gary Turnus.
Gary Turnus.
Oh, Gary.
Gary.
You Gary too?
No, I'm Jerry.
That's why I'm sorry.
I have, I have copies. I don't know if I have enough for everybody. This is a letter from our board of directors. I'm, my name is Gary Turnus. I'm the, on the board of directors for Real Life Cooperative on Lindell. And this letter comes from the entire board, through the council. I'd just like to read it. As a matter of routine, the Bloomington Police responding to calls to our building use a device like the one pictured below and the one I have here in my hand to open the, to prop open the door when they enter. The door is then left ajar while they proceed to the location of their call. No one is ever left to monitor the open door during the entire time the officers are busy with their duties, which may last quite a while. All emergency services have easy and ready access to our building. Thus, we fail to understand the persistent use of this device, which routinely leaves our building wide open. Our manager has tried unsuccessfully to bring this issue to the attention of the police department. A few of our members have addressed this issue with officers responding to calls, and each one has reported being met with a mind-your-own-business response, often expressed in less than pleasant manner. On October 12th, a couple weeks ago, the device pictured below was used in our front door by the Bloomington Police. After a long call inside, all of the personnel from the three responding vehicles walked out the front door and pulled away, leaving the door unlocked with this device in place. We can verify that at least one non-resident gained access to the building through this prop door during the officer's visit. We realize that forgetting to remove the propping device is not the norm. However, if this call had been late at night, our building would have been left vulnerable not only just during the officer's visit, but throughout the night before anyone would have discovered it. The senior population of Bloomington is among the most supportive of our public officials and services. And thus, it is most discouraging to find that those we rely upon for our most important needs of security routinely dismiss this concern in favor of this unsafe and unnecessary practice. We, the board passed unanimously to send this letter to the council.
And I appreciate your sharing this with us, Gary, and we will certainly share it with Chief Hodges and bring this up. I honestly haven't even seen a device like that, so I'm not sure how it's used, or why it's used, or what the, what the response, why they're there in the first place. I don't know any of the details around all of this. We will share this with the chief, and we'll have somebody from the police department get back to you and your board members with an explanation and continue this conversation and make sure we get a resolution.
It's always used, but it's always placed at the top of the door, where even if it's found later, good half, maybe two-thirds of our residents could never reach it.
Okay, so I appreciate it. So, all right.
That's all I need.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Jerry Hillary? It is Jerry. Oh, you are here, Jerry. Welcome.
Well, I too, name's Jerry Hillary, 9349 Quinn Road. And I too am here to speak about the seniors, but I would also follow the lead that I've been very impressed too, not having ever been involved in any city government, but went to a few council meetings. And it struck me in going to the council meetings that we had, the council would agree with whatever was put before, and, which was not impressive. And then I got involved with the Health and Wellness Center issues here, and had the opportunity to communicate with three of the members, and have, first of all, it was very impressive that they responded to me and spent time with me, and to the depth that our knowledge that made it obvious that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that public watching TV in a council meeting wouldn't have any awareness. So, thank you all for that, and shame on me for thinking otherwise from the council meetings. So I have, as I say, been a member of the community for better part of 55 years, and graduated, second graduating class from Jefferson, raised three kids through graduation, coached BAA, managed club teams, was on elementary school steering committees, owned and operated a business in Bloomington for 35 years. I've used the Jefferson Activity Centers and the tennis, and also used to swim at the Olson Indoor Swimming Pool. So I've enjoyed a lot of change in Bloomington from having Jefferson built two blocks down from where my parents and I lived as a teenager to building my home where I used to ride my dirt bike and occasionally be chased by Bloomington Police on their Harleys that figured we weren't supposed to be back there. And they didn't know the trails like we did, and they had big Harleys that weren't as agile. So we relished when they came to chase us. That's a long time ago. So, so change is good, and change is not always good. Climate change, for instance. So although I didn't vote for the referendum when it came around to the half-cent tax, I, not because I didn't see merit in civic projects, many of which I've enjoyed in my tenure here, but I never see it wise to write a blank check with, and at the time of this referendum, there were no defined plans on what this would be, other than that the name was gonna change to the Bloomington Health, and what was it? I just blanked now, I'm a little nervous, I guess.
On the center.
Health and Wellness Center. So I should also add that I've been around long enough to have seen when the referendum for the Jefferson and Kennedy Activity Centers was put forward, I think it was around 2002. And as I mentioned, I used to swim in the, in the pool there at Olson. And now all these public resources are down to, we've got four months in the wintertime where we can run at the Jefferson and Kennedy tracks for a nominal fee of $5 to $10 a month. But there's a lot of resource. I think there's still a pool, correct me if I'm wrong, at the former Penn Junior High too, as well as Valley View. As well as Valley View, so we've got three indoor pools that are no longer available to the public. We've got two Activity Centers. I, I don't know how this best work, I did talk to the director of the program at Jefferson, and this is what he's told me, I guess he's the director for the, for Jefferson and Kennedy's program, and so you can rent the pools out for events, but it is not open for general public use. So, you know, when we've had a program, standalone senior center, although it's been called a community center, it has been a de facto senior center, that's worked for better than 30 years, and now it's being eliminated to put up a facility where we're gonna be duplicating resources that are not being fully used, drug through my ire, and had me begin investigating all this. So I wish to see the senior center retained, I think that we all benefit from having a home of our own. I, Jenna and I have communicated a little bit, I did send back a message to you today, and I think all this stuff is good, I'd like to see a community center. I don't want to see a senior center be eliminated. And I don't feel that it was probably presented in the referendum to change the name to Health and Wellness, it had no indication, the general public, that this was gonna be changed, we would have figured, assumed that a senior center would have persisted. And I know many of the resources will, and many of them, the ones that I've used, have not, are not being replaced. Great benefit in having intergenerational activities, and I have, prior to the release of the plans, I had realized that this senior center is not being adequately used, I could imagine so many exciting things going on, they used to serve meals to seniors, which would still be nice, and why couldn't we have a program after school hours where home ec, baking and cooking were taught?
Jerry, I'm gonna have to interrupt you now.
I miss?
Well, we're past time, we've gotta get downstairs, actually, for the council meeting, and so, past our five minutes, but appreciate your comments, and appreciate what you brought forward here, and it's, I mean, I can give you 20 seconds to kind of wrap up and put a bow on it if you'd like.
So are things still not written in stone? That was a comment I've heard you make several times.
Well, we continued during, through the process here, and as time goes on, and each different iterative process, stone becomes a bit more and more solid.
Sure.
And, and that's just the practical way that you've got to do a building plan, especially in today's climate, where if we delay by six months, it's gonna cost us an extra X million dollars, right? I mean, we've got to, we have to keep moving forward on this. We have done a number of different focus groups, we have, I mean, I, I've heard from a couple of folks how they were, they're surprised that these, this proposal coming forward, because I think if you go back and look at the information that was presented, there weren't specifics, you know, it's gonna be this much square footage, but this is what the Health and Wellness Center was going to be and was going to look like and is going to include, and community rooms and.
You're saying with the areas and gymnasium?
I think that was, I think that was all part of it, without anything, again, without anything carved in stone at that time, but then as we've gone on through this process, and have heard back and looked at feasibility and use of square footage and so on, it's kind of evolving into what it's evolving in.
So I just close, our surrounding communities do have free standing senior centers, Eden Prairie Edina, and the entrance is at no charge. I doubt that you're gonna get too many seniors to pay six bucks to go play cards, I also doubt you'll get too many of them to go swim or go to the gyms for that same fee, when we can go to Lifetime on Silver Sneakers at no charge.
Appreciate, I appreciate your comments, Jerry, I do, and we'll incorporate it as we keep working forward on all this, we'll, I mean, it's part of the conversation, and we've been, we've been hearing from folks.
So, yeah, things have been spent, 100 million's a lot of money, a million dollars a year's a lot of money, if we go the wrong path as well.
Very good, yeah, thank you. Alan, Alan, don't go anywhere, well, we've got to adjourn here, but don't go anywhere, okay? I'll talk to you. Folks, we're over time, we gotta get downstairs, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned, let's get downstairs.